Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the February session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, I would ask if you have any audible device, whatever that may be, please turn it off or to silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings. We're going to review the minutes from the previous session of this body. Has everybody had a chance to do so on the Planning Commission? Any questions, edits, comments, concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson.
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. We have one absence currently on the Planning Commission with Ms. Helene Fitzgerald. She said she would be late, but she would be here, but we can go ahead and begin the Go over just a few things with y'all. The Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body, meaning that we will hear each application that's scheduled to come before it today. We'll ask questions. Those questions, the presentation from the applicant, they're allotted 15 minutes. They may utilize all that time or allow others to speak on behalf of the application. They may also reserve some of that time for rebuttal if they choose to do so. Questions from the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners will not count against that time. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to an application or may have questions, comments, or concerns is also allotted 15 minutes. And again, questions from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners will not be counted against that time. And again, as a recommending body, we will forward whatever recommendation comes from the Planning Commission to the legislative, to the legal authority that, whose jurisdiction the applicant rests in. In this case, in all three instances, it will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners with recommendation from the Planning Commission. Anybody wishing to speak? Also, there's a list of procedures that you can find in the back on the back table for how to participate in a public meeting. We will dispense with the reading of those requirements, but please feel free to take a copy. And at this time, Ms. Lippman, if you would care to introduce the first application.
I would. Our first application today is case number 2020-26-Z. Application by Four Star USA Real Estate Group, Inc., care of Miles, Hansford, and Talent LLC, J. Ethan Underwood, requesting to rezone 50.16 acres of B1 general business district to R55 active adult residential district to develop 130 single-family detached dwellings designated to serve the housing needs of senior residents 55 of 55 years of age or older. The property is located in land lots 530, 531, 532, 549, and 550, District 3, Section 3, at Seven Hills Boulevard west of Cedar Crest Road, and located in Post 4. Planning staff received one call with questions. Mr. Robinson met with them the end of 2020, and staff recommends approval with eight listed stipulations.
Is the applicant present? If you would please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Ethan Underwood. I'm an attorney with the firm of Miles, Hansford, and Talent. We're representing Four Star Group. And first off, I want to start off by saying that we appreciate the deferral from last month. It gave us some time to work with staff. One of the best things we can always provide to the public and to applicants is a little more certainty, and your staff's been great to work with to try to provide that certainty. We do have a presentation. I don't know if I, how to get that rolling. As stated, we are asking to take a piece of property that has been zoned for some time as B1 to the R55 zoning category. It's a little over 50 acres for 130 units. The density we're proposing comes in at 2.6 units of the acre. But as you know, with the R55, it is an age-restricted zoning category. Now, this property was, is part of the Seven Hills master plan. It's one of the last tracks out there, and it was originally designated, whoops, as a commercial use. It's behind the public center, and it has sat idle for some time. The difficulty, as we'll demonstrate, it's very severe topography, and the access is very difficult. It does not link to the commercial up front, and because of that, it's set idle. We're asking now to modify that so it is a usable property. Now, the benefits of the active adult is pretty apparent, is that you have older folks who will be living there. They're still active, but they're not on the roads at the same drive times that you or I are when we're dropping our kids off at school. So significantly reduce traffic during peak drive times, minimal impact on the schools. And we're also with code, we have a 50-foot perimeter buffer. It'll be a landscape strip along Seven Hills Parkway. That's a 50-foot buffer around the remainder of the perimeter, and we're asking for no variances on this application. Staff has provided the site plan to you. Of particular note, we do want you to see what's running through the middle of this property. It is a perennial stream. It has state waters, or it, so it has state waters buffers on it. We're not asking to encroach upon that, but I hope that illustrates that with that running through the middle of the property, as well as the steep topography, this really is not a feasible commercial site. A residential development is really the only feasible constitutional use that we could use this for, and we think this is a good middle ground to alleviate concerns regarding traffic impact and impact on schools. The zoning conditions that staff has proposed, we're agreeable to. These are the most recent renditions. We were working on them as early as this morning. And again, particularly with condition number six, we appreciate staff providing the specificity as to what would need to be done. The only request we would make is, again, trying to hammer out exactly what's required of us, we have condition number five that says interparcial access shall be provided to the eastern property, which is the Publix. You know, if you had flat topography, that would make a lot of sense to try to have a commercial access through there. But just cut back to the conditions. Let's see, this is, I'm trying to find where our carts have. Thank you. We already have to comply with the requirement for sidewalks and providing an eight-foot-wide multi-use trail connecting these sites. We would submit to you, that's the only interparcial connectivity that is physically feasible. This shows three cross-sections of the topography. Unless the county is interested in an Alpine slide, that's really about the only type of use this property can be put to. It's over 120 feet of topographic change at one, that location. This one goes down, up, then back down in the middle of the property, and then again, closest to Seven Hills Parkway is still extremely steep topography. So we understand the desire to have golf cart connection, have some type of pedestrian connection, but we would respectfully request that we narrow this down and not require any type of a vehicular connection between these two uses. More to the point, I also will think that people would want commercial cut-through coming through their neighborhood. As far as the access goes, this is the proposed access by Four Star. Obviously, your staff will still have to approve the final designs, and that will go through the engineering process, but we are anticipating a full access drive with a left turn lane, as well as deceleration lanes. In summary, it does conform your comprehensive plan, as well as your future development map. Your staff is recommending approval with the conditions to which we are agreeable with that small change. Finally, we will leave you with just some images of what's anticipated, master main type homes for senior housing. With that, we'll reserve the remainder of any time that we have, and we're happy to answer any questions at that.
I will go ahead and open up to the Planning Commission any questions that may come from us.
What is the square footage of each of them?
I believe the lots, I have Brandon Guthrie with me, who can clarify, but I believe the minimum square footage would be approximately 1,500 square feet at the base, and that would be the starting point. Brandon, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay.
The price points of these houses?
I believe they start in the mid-twos and go up.
This picture you're showing, is that a double-car garage or single-car?
It'd be double. It'd be tight, but it's a double-car garage.
Two both slippers?
Go through the summary.
There's all kinds of those.
I noticed on your slide, it showed the stream.
Yes, sir.
Going through the property.
Mm-hmm.
It appeared that some of what you were showing is encroaching into the buffer. So that, is that just a preliminary sketch? Do you realize you may not get the same yield of what this is showing?
We understand that, I believe the encroachments are the impervious surface setback. So we understand you can't put driveways, you can't put rooftops in there. You can obviously have yard, but you cannot grade within 50 feet.
But it has to be on the start buffer.
Buffer, yes, sir. So we have 50 outside of the stream bank, plus an extra 25 that we could disturb, but you just can't put impervious surface in it. But we understand that the yield is not guaranteed. This is what, you know, we are proposing for zoning, but once you go through the design phase, you know, we still have to follow all the rules.
Can you explain to me again, the ingress egress? I know it's going to be off of the Seven Hills Boulevard. And my concern is, I do live in Seven Hills, and I've clothed myself coming in. I really don't have a heavy foot, trust me. But by the time I get to where that, you know, where you would turn in, it's, and I'm talking to neighbors as well, it's about 50 to 55 miles an hour. What can we do, what are your plans to ensure that these individuals who own homes in here, as they're coming out there, that it's safe?
Well, again, we'll be working with staff and following all the ASHTO requirements for the access design. Staff still has to approve the full access drive, and if for some reason they say there's a median going to be there, it's going to be right in, right out. And that's completely up to your staff. But there will be deceleration lanes, and also a left turn lane that's constructed to ASHTO standards.
Okay, so there is, is there a median cut there now, where that access road is going to be?
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay, so they would be able to pull out and make a left?
Correct.
Okay, and again, that's my concern, so I guess you'll meet with staff and go over how to kind of mitigate any type of
Yes.
issues that would happen, yeah, again, at 50 miles an hour, somebody pulling out there is concerning to me.
I'll say this too, with the site plan, it is a proposed site plan.
Sure.
But as it goes through plan review, they'll have to meet the standards that Paulding DOT sets for them. That includes the location of the drive. If it doesn't meet site distance requirement at that location, they will have to shift or make augmentation to the roadway that would accommodate the site distance requirement, but that will be determined in the plan review process.
Thank you.
But Mr. Jones, do you have anything that you would like to add as far as ensuring the safety of the motoring public coming through Seven Hills?
Again, like you said, you know, this will go through the plan review process. You'll look at where the proposed access is. Does it meet site distance? Does it meet intersection site distance? Does it meet stopping site distance? Does it meet left-turn site distance? Is a full access going to be permitted? That will be decided during the plan review process.
If I could hold you there for just one moment, again, going back to the modification of the interparcial access, are you in agreement with the changes that were proposed as far as not allowing interparcel because the topographical features don't allow it?
I don't think we're at that point yet. I think we still like a language that's in the stipulations. Obviously, we're going to look at this, and if it isn't feasible, we had that language in there that we would not provide an interparcial access. I think at this point in time, we're looking at something that's more of a private road type, not a posted speed limit 25, 35 mile per hour roadway. So again, something that can fit on that particular parcel, if possible.
But again, you'll hold true to the development standards of the county as far as safety for
For public, yes.
Okay. Any questions to Mr. Jones?
I will. On that interparcel, on the interparcel connectivity, are we asking, are you asking for the developer to build that or to just provide the access?
Basically, to construct to where it would go to the property line.
How do we ask them to build on someone else's property? Is it part of the DRI or just to the property line?
To the property line.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Jones?
Again, if feasible.
If feasible. And what I understood from Mr. Underwood was they're agreeable to all other steps except that one.
I'm going to have him come back up in a second, but that's what I understood as Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Underwood, would you please step back to the lectern?
Yes, sir.
Before we go any further, I do want to make sure, because sometimes not being up here, I will be remiss in asking, but Mr. Hofstadter, do you have any questions or comments that you would like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
I think this is going to be to George, actually, but George, earlier, did you say, as far as that connectivity, would it be private or public option for them, both?
You could make it private, it doesn't have to be public.
I just, I couldn't, I didn't, I was reading and didn't hear what you said, so I was just, you know.
It wasn't, you discussed it one way or the other, but it could be a private, lower speed, just an access for those folks to get from the R55 to Publix eventually.
Right. Because I mean, I just, as far as myself, I don't know if I'd want much of a commercial entrance myself, you know, to invite people to come from a parking lot down in my neighborhood, but a private road would be something, to me, it might make a little bit more sense as far as some, the county doesn't even have to keep up either, so.
Again, what could also fit on there?
Right.
And that would affect the speed. You have to look at that and see if it works, even with the engineering.
Yeah, and could you address maybe as far as maybe the traffic concern Ms. Seaver had, as far as the, I think, with that roundabout, proposed roundabout that's coming next very soon, and what it might do to the speed limit down through there?
You know, we've measured speeds through Seven Hills periodically over the years, and typically, the 85th percentile, which is the speed that 85% of the folks drive, of the vehicles that travel up the road, is about 47 miles per hour. There's going to be a roundabout, like you said, at the intersection of Ben Leif, Blackberry Run. As you go into a roundabout, the geometrics force you to slow down to safely go in and exit. If not, you would crash into the center of it. So, you know, one of the things about a roundabout, it's a, you know, as part of the safety features, is it prohibits certain movements if you just basically turn right, but also one of the benefits it does slows speeds going in and also out.
Please.
What is the timeframe, George, that you're thinking of doing that roundabout? Do you know?
We're looking to let this project for construction bid it out, start construction within the next two months. We'd like to have that bid out, so hopefully sometime this summer, we would actually start construction.
Thank you.
And it's part of a larger project of a roadway widening from the bridge over Pumpkin Vine Creek to Cedar Crest Road. That roundabout is part of that project.
Board of Commissioners, any further questions to the applicant?
Yes, sir. Ethan, you may have said it, I just wasn't listening at the time. Amendities, you know, there are R55s that I've driven around, the other R55s, in fact, I thought, and maybe it's a question for Ann also, that there's certain requirements, but I didn't, I don't see anything on the map, so I was just interested in that.
There are some open space areas that are proposed. We don't have anything that's locked in that says there shall be a swimming pool or there shall be tennis courts, but what's proposed is passive green space under the site plan.
Do you know, Ann, if there's minimum requirements?
The amendments that we did to R55 last August do require two amenities in an R55 development, a community center with a minimum size of 2,000 square feet or five square feet per dwelling, whichever is greater, to serve the entire community, and walking, biking, and/or golf cart trails or sidewalks connecting all public spaces. Common spaces, male kiosk, and development entrances.
So how big was that center that?
The minimum size would be 2,000 square feet, so.
It sounds like there'll be a 2,000-square-foot community center.
Yeah.
And this community will have its home homeowner association?
Yes, sir.
So this is not going to be a part of Seven Hills, correct?
I believe it may, but I think it will have, definitely have a sub-community, sub-association.
So they'll be, they'll have full access to the pool, the one pool?
I don't know, Brandon, do you know the answer to that?
If you're going to speak, please come to the lectern, sign in. That way, we have record of the conversation. Thank you.
You can say it.
Brandon Guthrie, Four Star Real Estate Group. The anticipation is that it's going to be a separate development than the Seven Hills track. There was a settlement with that, and so it's outside of that HOA, so it is going to have a separate amenity in the front. This reference there, we don't have a design, so it's just a spot for it right now, but there should be ample space for the 2,000-square-foot minimum, as well as the male kiosks and other areas that you spoke about, but we will have it as a separate HOA.
So they will not be a part of the Seven Hills and have access to the Seven Hills pool?
No, no, ma'am.
I think that was one of the issues that the Seven Hills homeowners association had with it, that there was concern that there'd be that many more additional grandkids coming to use the pool.
No, we will make sure they have their own place.
Also, it's showing two places that you're going to be piping the creek. Is that going to be covered? How's that going to be done?
I mean, we'll address that once we get through the engineering. I mean, we don't have it fully engineered yet. This is obviously in the, you know, planning stages for zoning, but ideally, I would love it to be, you know, less impact as possible, so we just have to, you know, engineer how much of a crossing that is and see what impact that is and what mitigation we can do for it. But I don't have an answer for you right now, honestly, because we don't have it fully engineered yet.
So there's no intent to apply for a variance to the county for any type of the stream variance or piping or?
No, not at this time. I mean, we were very strict with our engineer that, you know, this is the zoning that we're applying for, and, you know, do the site plan corners for what the R55, as well as the new adoption that was made to it for the amendment, that he was cognizant of that as well in his site planning.
Well, I heard what Mr. Underwood said to begin with. I just wanted to reiterate that that was my understanding, and everybody's understanding should be that.
Yes.
Any other questions? Go ahead and sign in if you would.
I'll jot it down.
Okay.
Might as well.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf? Say it again.
I said, we're offline.
No, put it back up. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding it? If you would please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm having to yell because of the mask, so pardon me.
I know. I don't do well with this thing, anyway. I'm Barb Clark. Our property actually backs up right to their proposed, so they'll be in our backyard. I do have some, I really have concerns about the ingress egress out of this. Seven Hills, I know Deborah knows, it is almost impossible to get in and out of there, especially in the morning and in the evenings. You put, how many more, I missed the exact number they were going to propose to put in here, units. Can you tell me what that was?
130.
130? So, I'm sorry, but most people 55 I know are still working. So I kind of think that that is not going to be true, that these people aren't going to be coming in and out at that exact same time. So I think as far as a private lane, I'm not sure if I understood what you were saying that would be. Are you saying there's a separate turn lane completely to turn into that area?
Ask your question, and we'll come back and address that.
Because turning left there, I can't even imagine it. It is so hard on Blackberry Run, and I am absolutely thrilled to death to find out that the roundabout's going in. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. We need it so bad. My other concern is, when he said, I would like to know about the buffer. Is there going to be a buffer between my property and where they start construction of these? And how much is that area, if there is, and how do we enforce it? Because my understanding is from other developments, that never gets taken into account. The other question I have is, are they going to strip the, this is beautiful woods down there. Are they going to completely strip it and take every single tree out? Because the noise from up the top there, from Cedar Crest, from the bar, from Publix, the noise carries through there, and it's very loud. I get a concert every Wednesday night, whether I want it or not. It doesn't bother me that much, but music's one thing, race cars and everything else are another. So those are a bunch of my concerns. So if somebody could just address those issues, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. And you said Barb Clark?
It's Barb Clark, yeah.
Okay, just make sure I got the mask still.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, thank you. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Hearing none, I think at this point, probably a couple of questions to the applicant, and then maybe even back to Mr. Jones with the county DOT. But first, Ms. Lippman, can you address the buffer requirement between developments and as far as how much that would be and what guards against it being deforested?
Yes. As I mentioned, we did do some text amendment to R55 last August, and one of the additions was a 50-foot perimeter buffer. When I reviewed this site plan, I note that that buffer is shown on there, and the Planning and Zoning Department has hired a plans examiner. He started yesterday, so one of his main jobs will be to work with Development Division, the Building Division. He'll be going out onto sites and making sure that, first of all, in this case, in any case, that there is a substantial buffer there, because there is a clause in there that if there's not a substantial buffer, a landscape plan will be required. But he will be working through the development process to make sure that that 50-foot buffer stays intact.
And that will be a non-disturbance buffer?
Yes.
Okay, so by the words, that means property would not be disturbed. In other words, trees that were there now would remain there.
Exactly.
Within the buffer area, again.
It'll be a 50-foot, and they've shown it on their concept plan, a 50-foot wide buffer around the perimeter of the property.
And we will all be helping your plan reviewer do that, which we'll be calling. Because I remember when all of that was wooded area. Of course, I'm dating myself now, so forgive me. Mr. Jones, as far as the traffic, addressing the, kind of covered it already, but as far as being able to address the ingress egress for the development and what the requirements for the developer may be, I know it's still going to go through plan review, but if you could certainly give some information on that.
Certainly, Mr. Palmer. For a full access on Seven Hills Boulevard, which is a collector roadway, per the development regulations, required to have a right turn lane and a left turn lane going in to.
And we've established that we believe there is a median cut in that area, so it could allow access cross-traffic to the opposing lane?
Absolutely. However, we will look at it to make sure that site distance is met for
That was my next question.
Yes.
So you're going to look at intersection.
That's not necessarily a given as far as permissible use until it's determined the safety of
Until, exactly, till the ASHTO site distance requirements are met. In this case, you want to make sure you can see good to your right and to your left based on the speed of your traffic on the major road. You want to make sure that there's sufficient stopping site distance, somebody on the major road could stop for somebody pulling out, and also sufficient left-turn site distance if you're turning into the development from the major roadway. So we look at all that geometric requirements during the plan review process to make sure that those criteria can be satisfied.
And the ASHTO manual is a list of best practices put in for engineers as far as roadway design to ensure safety of the roadway for everybody traveling?
Exactly. It's basically the guidebook for engineers. It's the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, that's the full name, but it's called the Green Book. It's basically a design of roads, highways, et cetera, in the United States.
Any other questions to Mr. Jones? We've put him on the spot a few times now. Thank you very much. No, I'm sorry. Mr. Steele? you very much. I'm sorry. Mr. Steele?
Jumping back to the inner parcel. If they provide the access, is all we're looking for. We're looking for them to build to their property line.
That is correct.
Just the access?
Just to the property line.
Okay. Giving the access for it, not actually building to the property line, and then you having to do the geometrics to match it later?
No, I think we're looking, I think we're looking for the developer to bring it to the property line, if feasible, again.
Okay.
If feasible, you know.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just while these up there. Access to the property line, does that include building it to the property line, or just making land available?
Believe where it's, build it to the property line if feasible.
Okay. Build it to the property line if feasible as determined by PC DOT.
Yes, sir.
Going across that line, you're dealing with other people's property rights. Is that correct? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, while I'm at the end of James' question, so we don't even know where that access is going to be?
Common practice and standard practice for the county has been, and feel free to jump in and correct me, is what we have before us is a proposed visual for us to see what type of development would be there. Going into plan review, where you have your engineers and planning staff, as well as other professionals that are going to be dealing with the development overall, is where those case specifics will be brought and determined. And the developer will have to determine at that point, is it cost feasible for us to meet the requirements that the county establishes, or do something different. Doing something different may compel them to come back before us again, or come back to a development waiver review meeting committee, but regardless, they're going to have to abide by the development standards that you have as a body adopted. So, once plan review takes a look at the plans and determines that this location is not suitable, if that's the case, they will either have to shift the location of the access to meet the site distance requirements and the safety concerns. So, here is not where we tell them where the location of the ingress egress, the entrance is. That will be done at the plan review session by professionals.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And again, augment that any way you want. So I think we've addressed that. Are there any other questions that may be from the Board of Commissioners regarding this application? Planning Commission, any other questions? And again, this as a recommending body is determining whether or not a proposed use is suitable. It doesn't give the details of what may be put on the ground. Ultimately, that has to meet the development requirements of Paulding County. So at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2020-26-Z. Please remember to list the stipulations.
I make a motion to approve based on the staff recommendations with all eight...
The eight listed stipulations. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele with the eight listed stipulations. I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four, zero, four, one, and one. Did I get that right? I'm sorry, I'm having to count. So again, this is going to be heard at tonight's meeting, 7:00, with the Board of Commissioners. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. Anybody having an interest should be in present also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next case is case number 2021-04-C, application by Elite Engineering requesting to rezone 45.97 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R2 Suburban Residential for the proposed development of a 48-lot, single-family subdivision. Property is located in Landlots 999, 1000, 1001, and 1016, District 3, Section 3, located on the east side of Cartersville Highway, State Route 61, and south of Windmill Drive in Post 4.
And do we have the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
If you please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Summy with Elite Engineering, and I'm here to represent our client Vine Creek Residential with their rezoning case of this property to R2 for a 48-lot, single-family home subdivision. We are in conformance with the future land use map, and we have approval from staff for this. Our plans have two-to-three-car garage minimums that range with the houses from 2,000 to 4,000 square foot, in a price range of $300,000 to $500,000. This is a local builder who's done homes in Seven Hills and Bentwater, and we have reviewed the four proposed zoning stipulations with our client, and we are amenable to all of them. I'd like to reserve the rest of my time just to answer any questions or rebuttal.
Thank you very much. You said, Mr. Summy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Hearing, Mr. Steele? Board of Commissioners, any questions to the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Summy. If you can take your seat. Obviously, you still have some minutes reserved for any type of rebuttal, or we may call you back up for questions. Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of the application? Hearing, seeing none. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. At, Mr. Oster, did you have any questions?
Just one question.
Mr. Summy, would you please return?
I see it's got 2,000 to 4,000 square foot. What is the proposed number of bedrooms that we're looking at? We talked about two and three car garage.
The question's regarding the number of bedrooms that may be proposed with this development.
Yes. While I don't know that they've settled on an exact number of bedrooms, I would say for that, we're probably looking at three-bedroom houses, and we do have it proposed to be
Any further questions, Mr. Oster? Mr. Steele?
Most houses in that price range and that size are typically four-bedroom houses.
Any other questions or discussion points? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion with regard to application 2021-04-Z with the four stipulations. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson. I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded...
Four, zero, and one, or five, zero, and one?
Five, zero, and one. Yeah. His hand was down below the monitor, sorry.
Just making sure.
That's all right. The application will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners at 7:00. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. And at your convenience, if you would, introduce the fourth item, Ms. Lippman?
Okay. Our fourth item is our new business, which is zoning ordinance text amendment. Paulding County Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners to consider a text amendment to the Paulding County zoning ordinance 2003 as amended. The amendment is in regards to Article 6, Section H, creating a provision for repeal of reuse-related zoning stipulations, and I believe Mr. Phillips is going to handle this one.
Well, I hadn't heard much from Mr. Phillips, so this is a good opportunity to chime in.
All right. I think the best way, the best way to describe this, and Ms. Ashmore, if I'm wrong on my water history knowledge, please correct me. I think the first thing to understand is what is reuse? What is a reuse stipulation? Reuse water is essentially cleaned-up water, and let me go through a very brief history. It used to be that we just put our sewage in the creeks, way back when, and then we started cleaning up our sewage, all right? We cleaned it up to a certain level at a sewer treatment plant, and then the cleaned-up water would typically be discharged into a creek or a river. Later in history, up through probably, you know, into the 90s, 80s, and particularly the 90s, early 2000s, there was an idea, rather than taking this cleaned-up water from our sewage treatment plants and putting it back into our creeks and rivers, let's reuse it, and let's apply it to golf courses, let's apply it to residential lots for watering. It's what they would call gray water. Paulding County was very on board with doing this. EPD was, the regulatory authorities were very much encouraging this. So during that timeframe, we created reuse stipulations in zoning. This is also known as what they called the purple pipe. Instead of pipe was, piping was placed in the ground, and it would take water from the sewage treatment plant, and it would pipe it out to golf courses, and it would pipe it out to certain homes in Seven Hills that were part of a pilot project. And this water would get pumped from the various water treatment to those places. Those customers would apply that to golf courses, apply it to their yards, and more importantly, there were many subdivisions as part of zoning that were required to put in purple pipe, but that infrastructure was never ultimately connected and became operational. Laurie, do I have it okay so far?
Is it so far?
All right, thank you. Thank you. With the droughts that have hit Georgia, the EPD has begun going back to let's, instead of putting this cleaned-up water onto turf and onto yards through reuse piping, let's return this water to where it came from originally, the creeks and rivers. So the county believes that if we are in a situation where we can now discharge cleaned water from our plants back into our creeks, it will be returning the water to where it naturally came from, and I think, most importantly for the county, will help alleviate and increase the capacities that exist for cleaning sewage at our sewer treatment plants. So we are turning away from the reuse, the purple pipe system, and what this amendment does, it essentially says, any pre-approved zoning, which is required, some variation of the use of reuse, is repealed and no longer required. It does have a couple of exceptions. That's for existing users or existing customers on the reuse system. So that's what this text amendment proposes to do, is eliminate this requirement going forward. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Is this part of the EPA's resolution of some of the lawsuits with Alabama and Florida as far as the Chattahoochee Water Basin?
I'm not aware directly, but to me, it seems logically, if you're returning it, for instance, if you're returning it to Pumpkinbine Creek, it's going to the Etowah. Etowah will take it on into Alabama, and I would assume that if you're returning it in some basins within Paulding County, within Paulding County, it will ultimately get into the Chattahoochee. The Chattahoochee would be obviously a river directly impacted by the tri-state water wars.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the Planning Commission? Just keep thinking they're going to be spitting out 20-pound freshwater mollusks downstream on the Chattahoochee. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir. Now, I probably should ask you this before Laurie or Jason. I just thought about it. So it may be a dumb question. Most commonly, what we have had happen is people wanted, the developers have wanted to discontinue the purple pipe because of the extra expense. But if you had a neighborhood where it wasn't going to a golf course, but they had the option to use it on their yard, and half of them wanted to keep it, will they still have that? Or will all that be, they will lose that opportunity, I guess is what I'm asking.
Neighborhoods where it is active today will retain their ability to use reuse. We currently have about 40 customers on the system, residential customers, and two golf courses that we distribute reuse to, and they will continue to get that. There are additional infrastructure requirements to distribute it to anyone else.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners or comments afterward, I guess I will open for public comment? Hearing none. At this time, I will open the floor to public comment regarding the text amendment before us. Hearing none, I will now close the public comment portion, and I think that's all the action that we need to take. Is that correct?
Yes.
So at this time, want us to vote on a recommendation?
Recommendation would be nice.
There we go. Just opening it for public comment. So at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to the text amendment for reuse or reclaim water.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Aston, second by Mr. Leggett. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. I thank you very much for your patience today, and now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Henson, a second by Mr. Leggett. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Thank you, and everybody have a safe rest of your month.